Twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Chester County's fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of Chester County, South Carolina for the fiscal year commencing July the first, twenty twenty-three. To provide for the levy of taxes for Chester County for the fiscal year commencing July the first, twenty twenty-three. To provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other funds. To provide for other county purposes. To organize the county to bar, to authorize the county to borrow money in anticipation of taxes and to provide for it, for the repayment of the sum borrowed by the county governing body. To provide for the payment of the tort claims, workman's compensation claims against Chester County. And to provide for certain fiscal and other matters relating to Chester County. Okay? At this time, is that anybody would like to speak to the public hearing of this ordinance? Hear no, I declare the public hearing closed. All right, okay. Under ordinance and resolution and proclamation, this is the third reading of twenty twenty-three dash fourteen Chester County fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty, uh, twenty-four budget to establish operation and capital budget for the operation of the county government of Chester County, South Carolina for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty twenty-three. To provide for the levy of taxes for Chester County for the fiscal year commencing July the first, twenty twenty-three. To provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds. To provide for other county purposes. To authorize the county to borrow money in anticipation of taxes and to provide for the repayment of sums borrowed by the county governing body. To provide for the payment of those, of tort claims, workman's compensation claims against Chester County. And to provide for certain fiscal and other matters relating to county government. Motion on that, please?
Make a motion that we approve bullet point A, third reading of twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
Second?
Second.
Got a motion in second. Any discussion or comments?
So do have a question about the, um, the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen that reallocate some of the fee and lieu revenues. Will that be done at our next regular meeting?
When you say will it be done?
The third reading? The final reading?
This is our third reading, right.
So this is of the, of the budget?
Right.
But we had a separate ordinance dealing with the fee and lieu allocations.
That'll be on the third. Yeah, that'll be on the third. That's because the public hearing was set for then.
Okay.
Sorry, I, it took me a minute to grasp what you were asking there.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
Okay. Mr. Darby, like, would he would like to say anything relating to this matter? That seems a big, he's a big part of this.
Good evening. So I, just a couple of points from second to third reading, a couple of changes that were made. Um, I believe everyone got a copy of those changes. So at the end of the year, we have purchase orders that, um, for those goods or services that won't be received before June thirtieth. Um, so we added five hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars for purchase orders, um, what we call reserve for encumbrances. Um, I believe you, you should have a, maybe a list of, of those items, but they were, um, two generators, one for Fort Long Fire, one for the airport. Um, and then we had, um, an EMA Gator, which is a, um, I guess a utility vehicle that's been ordered. And then there was some EMS equipment and an ambulance and chassis that have been ordered. Um, those items won't be received until after June thirtieth, so we carry those funds over. Um, and so that totaled five fifty-two, four fifty-nine. Um, if you look in your ordinance, that was added at the bottom of the general fund. It should say Department seven-ten Reserve for Encumbrances. And that's the only change for the, the general fund. Uh, we also added ninety-five thousand, seven thirteen to the Chester Fire District. They had requested some capital, uh, skid unit for a brush truck and then two SUVs. In talking with our bond attorney, he didn't feel like it was advantageous to, to push that through a bond based on the amount. And also they have the fund balance, um, to support that purchase, so we added that for third reading. And then the only other change was in the wording, um, under travel, and that's in, I believe, section. Section eight, uh, we changed the wording from Myrtle Beach and Hilton Head to coastal area travel, um, with the Association of Counties Conference changing to, um, the Isle of Palms. Um, that, that wording didn't fit anymore, so we just changed it to a more regional coastal area. And so that fifty dollars would be for any coastal area travel reimbursement.
How about, um, matching grant funds? Do we have, I know we, normally you say that we have those in there. Is this, uh, is that our amount set for that or how do you handle that?
Yeah, right now, there's, um, based on the request, three fifty-six, six oh five is what's in the budget for matching grants.
Uh, should we, should we change the, um, the way that, uh, I just stated this reading to reflect these changes between the, the two different readings?
Yes.
Yeah. So we need to withdraw the second and redo this?
Yes, sir.
Who seconded?
I did. I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion. And redo my motion to approve the third reading of two zero two-three dash fourteen with the changes from Mr. Tommy Darby, including adding the reserve incumbents to the GF Department, adding ninety-five thousand dollars to Chester Fire District, and changing the wording from Myrtle Beach to Hilton Head to the coastal area travel.
Second.
Got a motion on second. I'll do a discussion on that. You have any comments on that, Mr. Darby?
No, sir. I just, I appreciate counsel. I know we had four good workshops and I appreciate Brian. It's been a pleasure working with Brian, um, to put this together in all the departments. So I just thank y'all for your time and, um, efforts. And I think, I think it's a good budget, solid. I think financially, the county's in a good, good position. Um, and so I, um, hope we continue with this next year's budget.
I'd like to personally thank you. I know you spent, I don't know how many hours, uh, in the first two or three months or four months of this year getting this up and organized and, and coming to fruition on this thing. So, uh, I'd like to personally say thank you for all that you've done on that.
Thank you.
I'll second that. And, uh, I wonder if we could explain to the public, uh, some of the increases we experienced this year. Uh, it's often painful at budget time to, uh, have to deal with issues like this, but they're important issues and we did it. Could you explain to the public what increases we had to deal with?
Yes, sir. So, um, obviously we have mandated increases. We have the retirement rate changes. Um, over the last five years, those rates have increased by one percent every year. Um, and so that's something that we had to build into the budget, and that's a mandated increase. Um, I think Brian could probably speak to this a little bit more, but I, I think our focus was on salaries, trying to, um, get the, the employee salaries up to where they need to be. Um, so, um, there's a little over a million dollars that's been put into the budget to, to get those salaries where they should be. Um, we established a capital reserve, um, account, which is for, um, excess fund balance, and those, those, um, reserves would be used for capital, um, based on council's resolution. We had an allocation of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand for, um, paid firemen for the Richburg Fire District. And so that was a big increase also for this year. Um, I think that's pretty much the highlights. Like I said, the focus was on salaries. I think operationally, pretty much everything stayed as it was in the current year, but we really tried to focus on salaries.
Thank you. I think we, as a county government, are charged with the public safety. Max has told us that numerous times, and, uh, so getting these full-time firemen funded and making sure we keep our law enforcement officers and that they're not leaving for the neighboring counties, I think that's extremely important, and that's why we acted the way we did.
Well, I, Mr. Vaughn, I absolutely agree with you. I think that's one of the critical things. Mr. Darby, thank you very much. I think the employees of this county, the most valuable assets we have, and trying to take care of them is the, is the job of what we should be doing. Um, I don't know if y'all all watched the news this morning, but there was a lithium plant on fire in Vesselam City, North Carolina. So we're getting ready to get a lithium plant, uh, in Chester County. And Mr. Melton, Chief Melton's been on the phone with Australia of Alamo, trying to get all this stuff lined up. But, uh, the employees of this county are what, what counts. And thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I, I just think that citizens of Richburg will really appreciate the fact that we found a way, and you, Mr. Darby, to get those full-time firemen in Richburg that was much needed. I, I actually had a meeting with the chief down there, and I was impressed, uh, about how he ran his fire department. And, uh, I, I told him in that meeting that I would do all I could to help this council, get him what he needs. And I'm, I'm very happy that we've come to where we are right now to help them.
Thank you.
Mr. Hester, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just that, um, no, I think the county is in, um, we're in a good financial position going into this next budget year, and we have an opportunity to be even in a better position going into the future. Uh, like Mr. Darby said, um, you know, we met with all the directors, we met with all the, uh, elected officials in our county, and pay was priority. And I think it should be priority. When I came here, um, you know, I was, I was taken back a little bit. Um, and so we've done a fantastic job of exceeding, um, I think, this year, and you as council voting for, uh, the pay raises for our employees, especially fire EMS and, uh, our sheriff's office. And I think that, uh, you know, we, we, we actually exceeded some of the, the initial requests. As Mr. Darby said, the operational expenses kind of stayed the same, you know, and that's kind of true while after COVID, we experienced large increases in operational costs throughout the country and all, all sectors of business, they've sort of leveled out. But where we haven't seen the level out is with, uh, construction costs and some of that. And you guys, uh, are all aware of the main challenges we have, and this is for the public to understand too, that the main challenges we have going forward is we need a jail. Um, I've been out and toured the sheriff's jail, and we need a jail. We also, uh, have some projects that are under construction or in the midst of construction out for bid. And, um, you know, those are, those are challenges that we have and we have to work through. So, um, that's where we're going to put a lot of our effort, um, over this next year. And, uh, but I do, uh, it was between Mr. Darby and his staff and our finance staff, uh, I walked into this at the beginning of the budget season, and they made it very easy for me. So I appreciate that.
And, uh, also, I'd like to thank you for bringing or biting the bullet, making us, the council, aware of the things that absolutely had to be done. And, uh, I think this is something that needed to be done in the past, and thank you for spearheading that and, uh, leading us in that direction.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, there's one item I'd like to, in the budget, when we get ready to vote, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on one specific item.
What is that?
And it's the donation to the senior services for sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. My wife is the chairman of the senior services board, and that's a conflict. And I'm gonna recuse myself from that specific item.
You get that, Madam Clerk? Okay. All right. Other than recusing yourself from that particular point in the budget, uh, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
All right.
Unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay. Moving along to B, twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, resolution to approve county, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four department, departmental organizational charts. Need a motion on that?
I move that we approve the resolution to approve county, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, departmental organizational charts.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion in the second. Uh, any comments or questions or?
Mr. Hester, did you review all of this and, and sign off on it?
Yes, sir. Just, and just as a matter of, of note, uh, this year's organizational charts, um, are all correct. There may be, if you look at last year's organizational charts, there's a little, might be a little bit of confusion because it seemed that, um, there was a period where, while the original organization, organizational charts were approved in, uh, last year's, it looks like it carried over to October. Um, and then there were some changes made between October and, um, this reading of the organizational chart changes. So, uh, a few of them you may look at, and they may be a little bit confusing to you as to what's changed, but just please ask me the questions, but I've reviewed all the new ones, and they are accurate at this point.
Any, any further comments on that? I'd like to say that, uh, opposed to sheriff, if sheriff can keep up with all his organizations out there, he's gonna be doing good, I'm telling you, it's extensive. Uh, it's, uh, I read through that thing, and it, uh, quite comprehensive out there, Sheriff.
Ms. Flumin.
Yeah. You and Mr. Tate must've been late hours up there trying to maintain and organize and, and keep up with all those different things that's going on out there. And thank you for putting the job that y'all do out there also. All right. Hear no further discussion? Uh, all in favor of, uh, a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-three departmental, departmental organizational charts? Uh, raise your right hand and say aye?
All right.
Aye? Unanimous vote. Okay. Moving along to C, uh, the first reading of twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, an ordinance to amend Chester County purchasing and contracting policies and provide procurement, uh, provide procedures, procedures in the procurement manual. Need a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve first reading of twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, an ordinance to amend Chester County purchasing and contracting policies and procedures procurement manual.
All right. Any second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vaughn. Okay. Got a, a motion in the second. Any discussion or comments on that?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a few comments.
Okay. You ought to.
So there's no questions?
Yeah, because I'm telling you, that's, that's quite extensive. If Ms. Coke can keep up with all that and follow all those rules, she gonna.
So we've been working between, uh, Ms. Coke, Ms. Winters, and, uh, myself. Uh, we've been working on this for quite some time. Um, I'll give you the gist, and there's still some, I will tell you before third reading, uh, there will be more changes. Um, we found some late this afternoon that, just some little tweaks in it. Um, it's forty good pages of reading. Um, so, um, we're, we're just kind of ironing out, the, what really kind of threw, uh, some change in it was the county administrator form of government and just how we're operating with that. So we're trying to make sure that, uh, there's a review, uh, before it comes to council, and there's a recommendation that comes to council on, on these things, and we have the ability to kind of go back and forth on that before it comes to you guys and gets ironed out. So there's not a lot of, uh, time wasted spent, spent on some of this stuff, uh, before it gets to you. With regard to dollar amounts, we tried to make our process a little more efficient and less cumbersome, and we sort of reverted to state, uh, procurement policy for numbers. We were pretty tight and restrictive as to when you had to have, uh, quotes, bids, sealed bids, written solicitation, and so forth, all that. And we just upped those amounts basically to mirror what the state's, uh, numbers were. Um, we were well under the state's numbers on, when you had to go out for RFQ, we raised it from twenty thousand to a hundred thousand, correct? Um, I'm just, and I'm going off the top of my head, so, um, and then we actually put in a caveat in there for, uh, purchases under five hundred dollars to where our, you, in, in situations that trying to obtain a PO would, um, not be reasonable, that, uh, department directors have the ability to purchase less than five hundred dollars without a PO as long as the PO is written within two days. So they can do it from an approved vendor. So let's say sheriff needs a car towed, and we have an approved vendor, and it's on a weekend, and he can't do a PO for that, he can have that car towed. Um, so we, we put in some things like that, as well as some approvals by myself for circumstances that necessitated, um, deviating from our, our policy a little bit. So if there's any other questions I can answer, that's kind of the gist of it.
And you said it was a, when you said, you say a hundred thousand dollars you can do, uh, under your, say so, is that what it is?
Well, it's a hundred thousand that we don't have to go out for RFQ. So a hundred thousand is our new RFQ limit, and so what that means is up to a hundred, between twenty-five and a hundred, you have to have, you have to solicit written bids. So you have to have a written solicitation for bids, and that's putting it on SKEBO or one of the other sites that we do, um, or requesting and writing bids. And then we have to have three bids, um, from that. But the RFQ process can get, um, can, can actually cause, uh, some of, some vendors not to participate, and so we just mirrored the state on that hundred thousand dollar limit for the RFQs.
I know in the past, we, uh, the, uh, under the old system, under the supervising system, what was the max that he could spend ten, was it ten or twenty thousand dollars without? You know, Ms. Coke, you can answer that.
Yeah, we had, um, twenty-five thousand dollars was, um, when we put it, or twenty thousand dollars when we could put it out for bid, was anything over twenty thousand dollars. Um, it's gonna be, now that we, if we change it to, to a hundred thousand dollars, we're still gonna be, the, anything between twenty-five and a hundred thousand dollars, we're still gonna be soliciting for quotes. Um, we're still gonna be doing, um, how did I put that? We're still gonna be doing like a scope of work on some of these items. Say we, let's go with the, like an AC unit, so we can get an AC unit for like, uh, thirty-three to forty thousand dollars. We're still gonna be getting some specs, spec, um, some specifications on that, and we can still put it in SKEBO, but we can get quotes back instead of trying to go through the whole bidding process. It's gonna be a quicker process, because a lot of times when you have an AC unit go out, you need it quicker than going through a whole month process of a bid. So we won't do the RFP for that process. So this will actually give us a quicker turnaround time for those, um, to actually just go, yeah, for that purchase.
Murdered and mad.
Right. So those, that'll help in that process, um, for stuff, for things like that. So the RFPs are, or the RFPs where we go out for a hundred thousand dollars and over are gonna be for those larger proj, projects.
All right. So how about, how about vehicles?
How about vehicles? Vehicles, we're looking at, um, most vehicles we can get on state contract. However, in the last couple of years, we've had, uh, with any kind of new vehicle, it's been very hard to get them on state contract. So we're looking at getting a, a little bit different policy in here to where we can, um, get, if we cannot get them on state contract, then we can look elsewhere and get like three quotes from, uh, from three different vendors and get that lowest quote. And if we, a lot of times we do get like six vehicles at a time, usually it's for the sheriff's office. And if we can get three quotes from three different vendors on vehicles, we can get multiple of that for that same price. So we could get, um, we get three different quotes, we get, uh, we can get si, like six vehicles from one vendor at that same price for one, in, in one PO. So that kind of, instead of going out for bid, because when you go out for bid for vehicles, which I've done before, the vehicle, the vendors usually do not want to bid on that. We've done it before. I have one bid on a vehicle because they could care less, they just want, they just sell them off the lot. They don't really care to bid on that, do the whole bidding process. So we don't usually have very good luck when we bid those out.
We, we wrote a caveat into the, um, manual that basically, um, multiple vehicles will not trigger an RFQ, no matter the amount. It's based on a single vehicle amount.
Would it be fair to say that the changes we're looking at doing and continuing to look for makes the whole purchasing process efficient?
Yes.
And it could end up saving the taxpayers some money, could it not?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Hester, there's one specific thing in here. Well, there's a number of them, I've been reading it all day. But, uh, item number three, Department of Contracts and Procurement, says the creation in A on page twelve and thirteen. I would like for you to make sure you look at that specific, uh, process there. Uh, and when you come back to second reading, we, you know, if you change it or whatever, I would like to, I would like to know what you did with it.
Okay. Yes, sir. I'll highlight that right now. Um, there's also, and I, they were on twenty-eight, but with the page twenty-eight, but I've got to find them now because with the changes, it pushed some things around. Um, but one of the things that, that is in there, and Ms. Winters, you might can help where it went to, but, uh, it allows that for uncertain, oh, I see it, unforeseen occurrence requiring prompt and immediate action. Um, and there's also another section that, that allows me to make some decisions, uh, for us to, uh, move forward with purchases, uh, when the situation dictates. And I was, I can't find, where did the one on twenty-eight go?
There, there's one in the beginning for exigent circumstances. I think it's under C.
No, it was past that. It wasn't in, it was after exigent.
Let me, let me search.
Oh, I see. It's after the sole source. Examples of permissible non-competitive procurement, it kind of got pushed to page.
Is that the one where it says the director can do sole sourcing as opposed to the county administrator?
Uh, this one says where examples of permissible non-competitive, where the county administrator is deemed a compatible equipment accessory services and so forth of its, of paramount importance, where the item of services, uh, or services unexpected but immediate, um, and where an item's required for trial use testing or public utility services, uh, so I didn't see the part you had, you were talking about. The director, uh, maybe what you were referring to is the director does have to, when, uh, when they fill out a sole source procurement, the director, it's her responsibility, it's, it's Ms. Coke's responsibility to review that sole source information and make sure it's accurate in a normal situation.
Right. They, they, being a sole source, um, they, the vendor has to write that letter, and then I'll verify that they are a sole source. I mean, it's, it's fine if, if you want to be involved in that as well, but it's something I look over, make sure they are a sole source.
And I think that's what he's referring to, is where it says you review it.
Yes.
But we did have a situation, maybe, I don't know, a month ago, something with sheriff's office, where I did use that section to, um, move forward with a purchase that, that fell into that, and I can't remember what it had to do with.
I don't know if it was a sole source. It wasn't a sole source. It was something, it was something else in there.
Okay.
It was another section in there.
So, um, I think the section, Mr. Hester, that you're looking for is under one C in the beginning. And it says, uh, so I'm on page, what, my, my page is number four, this is on the green line. Um, and so it's the paragraph that begins for purchases of ten thousand and one through twenty-five thousand. The last paragraph says, under exigent circumstances, and where the department director has conducted due diligence and, and is unable to obtain three quotes, only the director or the county administrator can approve the purchase using, um, one or two quotes. Is that the section you're, you're referring to?
I think that was it.
Page four is what I'm talking about, sole source.
Oh, I see where you're saying, must be approved by the director or a single supplier. And that, you know, if council feels that I should be on that, but when we do sole source procurement, it's their responsibility to ensure that, that that is a sole source via the letter plus their research that they do to check that. So I have not in the past those, I don't think we've had one of those, have we?
Not since you've been here, but we've had them in the past.
The only reason I'm asking about is everything above there says the county supervisor scratched out, county administrator, and it get down here to that, it's lying through the county supervisor and, and it's the director. So I mean, I was just curious.
I, I mean, if council feels that it would be better for me.
We can do and/or?
I think we should just put it back in as county administrator, because it was actually taken out by recommendation from the buyer, it looks like.
It was actually me.
You?
Yeah, I, originally, that was back in November. And when I first started working on the policy, I, I was just making some notes everywhere. Because before, before we had a county administrator, things were done different back then. So when I was doing this, we didn't have a county administrator. We had, you know, I know it was going to that, but at the time I was typing all of this in, we hadn't, I had no idea what type of administrator we would have. When we had a county supervisor before, things were much different. And so that was the way it was back then. A lot of things didn't happen the way they happen now. So that was, you know, I, my buyer actually typed some of this up for me as I had it written way back.
Obviously, it's just first reading, so I mean.
And we, and we have, we actually sat this afternoon and talked about any change. We were actually gonna read it in title only, but we went ahead with the full, full bore.
So, yeah, there's, it's gonna be a few changes.
But her and I will go through that. And I do appreciate your work on it, Ms. Coke. Thank you.
My problem is, I kind of like this kind of stuff. That's what I used to do probably.
So is there anything that needs to be changed for the second reading?
Just these few minor things that we.
Right. You guys can go ahead and, I mean, if you, if you make a motion to, to go ahead with first, the first reading, just know that we will have a couple of changes. We'll bring those changes to your attention for second reading.
Sound good. All right. We got a motion and a second on that? All right. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay.
Make a motion with your turn.
Okay. Without any council comments, we got a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.